Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And we're gathered for our second work session this afternoon. This one is with Lori Hodges and her Office of Emergency Management Team to talk about lessons learned, which is always a good thing to talk about. My name is John Kofalis, Commissioner District One, Chair of the Board, joined by my colleagues, Kristen Stephens and Jody Shadock McNally. And we have Loretta Volker, our County Manager. So I believe at this time, did you want to say anything or queue it up there, Loretta?
Sure. We've had a couple of events happen. We've had a few deployments. And so this team has done what they always do. They've looked at what did they learn from those opportunities? And I think it's quite a bit, a lot. Some of them are nuanced and some of them are pretty significant. And so Lori and her team wanted to come and talk to you about those and what they've learned.
All right. Lori Hodges, Director of Emergency Management. I'll have everybody introduce themselves really quick and then we'll get started.
All right. Cole Parrott, Deputy Emergency Manager.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ricardo Perez. I'm the Inclusion and Engagement Coordinator with our office.
Good afternoon. I'm Camille Millard. I'm the Preparedness and Resiliency Specialist for Emergency Management.
All right. So as Loretta mentioned, we've had a busy year this year. We've had two wildfires that were more significant than your typical. I mean, we've had a lot of wildfires, but two wildfires where the EOC had to activate for multiple days, two out of county and out of state deployments, and then two call center activations. Actually, there's been three deployments. I forgot about the avian influenza. But anyway, so we're going to talk about kind of those six events, kind of what we learned, and also talk about how like Larimer County does it different or, you know, what we can take from that. So that's kind of what today is about. If you guys have questions along the way, we should have plenty of time for any kind of questions or comments. So as you guys know, at the end of July, we had the Alexander Mountain Fire up the Big Thompson Canyon. This fire really had the potential to become a multi-week, multi-month fire. The fire management and the emergency responders did a great job of keeping that fire from crossing thirty-four. That was kind of a big trigger for everybody. If it crossed thirty-four, then it would have been a completely different fire because of the populations and the values at risk there. So yeah, the Alexander Mountain Fire was a couple of weeks of activation. We just held, we had an intern in our office, Natil, and she actually met with all of our smaller groups throughout the Emergency Operations Center, and they put together notes about what worked, what didn't work, lessons learned. And then we had the large after-action review last week with the whole EOC and some of our emergency response personnel. So we will be creating a report, a final report on the Alexander Mountain Fire that has kind of all those lessons learned. And we'll be putting the Pearl Fire into that report as well, because Pearl Fire was a smaller fire, but there's still some lessons there as well. So Cole can maybe, for the Pearl Fire, I stayed out of the Pearl Fire because I thought it was a good training opportunity. So even though I was around, Cole ran that fire with our team, so did a fabulous job. So a couple of the strengths that we had, you know, our biggest strength here, I think, in the county is our existing relationships and partnerships. We have enormous partnerships that come to the Emergency Operations Center and work with us, and people don't feel like they have to be there. People want to be there, and they get good information there, and they tend to work together really well. So that was really great. For the Alexander Mountain Fire, we had a huge amount of utility coordination because there were high values at risk for that fire going up the canyon. Fiber was a pretty big deal. I don't know if most people realize this, but in the Emergency Operations Center, the Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority and our utilities providers and Emergency Operations Center personnel, they look ahead multiple days and they look at what the values are going to be at risk if the fire moves in any specific direction. And from that, they realized that there was a fiber line that was at risk, and if we lost that fiber line, we would have lost nine-one-one service to Estes Park. And so before it was ever at risk, the fire was kind of headed that way, a group of people was able to get together and they were able to figure out an alternative route for that fiber, so that when it was impacted, which it ultimately was, they never lost nine-one-one service and that they never lost the fiber to Estes Park. So that was just a really good example of how people getting together and looking ahead, seeing what those critical values are at risk, and brainstorming, how do we solve this problem? And they solved it before it became an issue. That was just huge. So great partners there. And our utilities, having them there in our operations section was just huge. I don't know if you had anything else you want to say about that, Cole?
I guess I'll just further emphasize it, and that's that we've been working for, I mean-
Can you turn on your mic, Cole?
Yes. Always forget. We've been working for a number of years to bring in our utility partners. It's been kind of a big thing for us, and we've always felt that we've, there's just a ton of partners from like emergency response agencies all the way to, you know, private sector and nonprofits and everything. So it's been a big push for us the last few years to get, you know, utility partners in. And this was just another rewarding kind of event, I think, for us, because we were able to engage so much with utility partners and, again, have them in our EOC and connect it, and then come back, come to the AAR, the after-action, and just talk about other ways that we plan to continue working together. So I think it was just another kind of encouraging, you know, example of that partnership and the fruits of it. So, yeah.
I have a question, colleagues, very quickly. Were there any communications issues at all with residents, people, homeowners there, property owners, due to lack of cellphone coverage, or perhaps if they just relied on landlines and telephone poles going down? Were there any of those kinds of issues?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Yeah, not for this incident.
Okay, thank you.
So the other part with the utility coordination is earlier this year, we had that public safety power shut off through Excel. It's the first time we've had that in the county. And I do think that because of the exercises that we did the year previous on utility coordination, having the utilities be part of those exercises, we were notified right away of that public safety power shut off. So we had about twenty-four hours to try to plan for that, where other organizations and jurisdictions didn't have that advance notice. And again, I think it's because we had already established that relationship to get that phone call. So that was another good utility thing. And then also Loveland Water, Loveland Power, you know, the city of Loveland is part of our regional Emergency Operations Center. So again, that was a really good coordination with utilities as well from the municipal side and the county side to make sure that we were looking at their infrastructure as well. So they were there throughout the entire activation as well. Other things were clear roles and responsibilities. So we've, you know, spent a lot of time trying to figure out who are the right people in the room, who are the right positions that we need to fill. And so everybody really did know what their role was, which means that nobody really got too overwhelmed. We did have, which I'll talk about this in kind of areas for improvement or lessons learned, you know, all of us are leads in the Emergency Operations Center. So for us, it can be hard because there's not always somebody who can take our place. And I think that's just something we're always going to have to be looking at continuity. But there were clear roles and responsibilities, so everybody kind of felt like they knew their role and they knew what they needed to do. We didn't have to train people when they came in because we've done enough exercises there. And then our Emergency Operations Center personnel are highly adaptable, flexible, and problem-solving personnel. Again, we have that consequence management unit or consequence management philosophy in the Emergency Operations Center, where we're really trying to figure out the what-if scenarios, all the what-ifs that could happen with this event, and try to solve the what-ifs before they ever come, and then when they do come, we're ready for them. So I think by having that forward-looking response, it makes our EOC personnel able to just manage the unknown. They come up with all kinds of unknowns all the time. That's just what they do. And so they're more adaptable, I think, than a lot of other Emergency Operations Centers. The downside to that is there is no software that exists known to man that is flexible enough for our team. So we've tried a bunch of software and just nothing exists other than a gaming tool is not really for Emergency Operations Centers. And then the last thing is a strong foundational Emergency Operations Center. So with this event, we kept hearing over and over again from people, hey, this feels like one of our exercises. And I took that as a really great compliment because it told me that we're exercising right. And people just went in and they're like, this is just like we do it during an exercise. So they weren't feeling the stress. They were able to just kind of manage it. So I thought that was great. So those are kind of some of the strengths. Did you want to mention anything for Pearl Fire specifically, Cole?
No, I don't think anything different.
All right. Any questions about any of that?
Collins, anything? Yeah. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. First, I guess I just, I could say I'm not surprised you guys are amazing, and so just really glad to hear all this. But I'm curious how we had multiple jurisdictions working together on this, on the Alexander Mountain specifically, and there was one even big team that came in. And how, how did that work? If these guys are saying it feels like an exercise, because I've been, I've been part of those exercises, and how, how did this, how did it all dovetail together? Did it dovetail together? Because we don't always have the Southwest Management Team come in, so I'm just curious how that, have you planned for how that, they come in and dovetail so it's not disruptive to the disruption? So.
Yeah, the, you know, one of the lessons that we learned from the Cameron Peak Fire is that the Emergency Operations Center has to be part of the transition plan whenever a new team comes in. It was always really the field personnel, the response personnel, and the sheriff's office that were part of that transition plan. But because our EOC does a lot of stuff other Emergency Operations Centers don't do on incidents, it's important for us to be in that transition meeting and to tell them, here's how we do it in Larimer County. So the sheriff's office made sure that for the Alexander Mountain Fire, we were part of that transition meeting when the new team came in. The good news is that team worked with us during Cameron Peak Fire, so it wasn't an unknown team to everybody, which is helpful. So they also kind of already had an idea about what the Emergency Operations Center could do. That gave Camille a chance to meet with their buying team and their logistics staff, as well as inter-agency dispatch. We learned a lot from the Alexander Mountain Fire about what works and what doesn't when we bring in the national teams and how we need to trade. Like sometimes we have to pass off our stuff to the team and then get it back at the end. So how does that look? So we learned those lessons, too. So I do think that the lessons from Cameron Peak helped us to make things better here. I still think, though, that we could do better and do more in the future with regard to those transitions, make sure that the team really understands our role. We've talked a lot about having a liaison from the Emergency Operations Center in the field that is kind of our eyes and ears and then bringing back information to us. I kind of joke with everybody that as soon as somebody goes in the field, they're lost to me forever and I never hear from them again. So trying to find that right person who can be our field rep and make sure they're part of the meetings, like usually there's a law enforcement meeting where they talk about all the traffic control stops, and we provide the logistics for law enforcement. So us being at the table there is also important. Camille went up multiple times to talk with Dakota, who was the logistics field person, before the team came in as well. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that at all.
Yeah, I think the biggest change from Cameron Peak to this year, at least from my experience, is we were able to take a personnel position, her name was Libby in Cameron Peak, and make that field liaison position through a collateral duty with emergency services. So Dakota Condon with the sheriff's office, she is our field logistics liaison. So whereas I'm duly embedded in the EOC, she's actually out at camp, hearing things, and then we are, you should see our call logs. It was every second, back and forth. So, and that made night and day difference on, okay, well, this is what I'm hearing. It really cut the game of telephone in almost half. And then, and when the IMT team came in, or Incident Management Team, both of us going there and walking through with the logistics personnel there, this is how our system works. These are our contracts. How do you want, do you want these? Do you need to use your Viper National contracts? And I think if I didn't have Dakota during that, it just would have been, I would have never been there. I would have never been in the EOC. I would have just always been in the field. And I just can't thank her enough for the work she was able to accomplish and how much we both grew. And I'm very thankful to have such collaborative partnerships that the sheriff's office is willing to take her off of her role for two whole weeks and put her in the field. So.
Yeah, that was a huge bonus. And we're still trying to figure out a way to have a liaison in the Emergency Operations Center as well from law enforcement. So that's always something that we're kind of thinking about, just to have those connections, you know, because otherwise, to your point, we could lose that synergy between all the different pieces and parts that are going on in the field and the EOC. So hopefully that answered your question. Okay. All right. So some areas for improvement, the ability to display information real time. So I know that there's talks with the emergency services about kind of upgrading our cameras to really be able to see what's happening in the field, to be able to see when those, where those fires are moving and growing. Our video wall displays during this event were not working because we were in the middle of upgrading to a new system. So it was right when we had kind of the, we just stopped the old system. We hadn't installed the new system yet. Of course, that's when the fire happened. So there are just a number of ways in which we could better use visual displays in the Emergency Operations Center. So we're working on that now. The, the work is now done in the Emergency Operations Center, and the video walls seem to be working really well. We'll have a lot more flexibility now to be able to show data as we go forward. And then GIS is, you know, key. And I think, you know, even ten years ago, GIS probably wasn't that important, other than just getting the daily map that you got for the incident in the field. Now GIS is an integral part of everything that we do. There's so many different ways in which the, the mapping components, the data layers, the dashboards that we need in the Emergency Operations Center, that's a huge deal. So I'm very focused on dashboards myself. And so now that we have that GIS person that was just hired for Enterprise GIS with that public safety focus, one of the things we really want to work on with them, one of the priorities, is to get some of those dashboards created. So people have just a quick look at everything that's going on. And I'll talk about that again when I talk about our deployment to Florida, because they had a really good tool that I'm going to try to implement here that'll also give you guys real-time information about what's going on in the EOC as well. And then continuity and key positions, I already mentioned this, you know, there were many comments during the after-action review about the leads were just really busy, the leads are really stressed out. And I think that that's just the nature of the, the role that we have in the Emergency Operations Center. However, always looking at continuity and people who can fill in those roles is good, good as well. We are working on a lot of process improvements for EOC forms and actions. You know, I think we have a lot of good stuff, but we really haven't formalized it at all. And we don't have where anybody could slide in, they can look at the instructions, and they can figure it out. So we just need to formalize some of our processes more. And then probably the biggest one is, and this is going to come up three or four times today, is that we need to move away from people in the county, your county personnel, thinking this is a OEM or Officer or Emergency Management event. It's a whole-of-county event. So we pull people in from all over the place, but in some cases, people are like, well, I just really can't do that. Today's not a good day. And so we need to try to change that philosophy, I think, here in the county to make it, this is a county thing. The Emergency Operations Center is a county function, and therefore there are certain county roles and responsibilities that have to happen. One thing that I'm working on right now with Mark Pfaffinger is a service-level plan. So for different levels of EOC activation, we'll have different service, services provided to us by IT fleet and a few others, GIS as well. And so if we can get that plan developed, then that'll help, I think, in the future when we activate at a Level Two, they're going to know that they need to have somebody on-site for IT helping us through whatever. So that is something that we're already working on right now to try to improve that area. So questions?
Yeah, so to that point, have they been involved in a lot of exercises, like other people that you expect to be involved? And so I'm just wondering how we kind of make sure we get that message across that this is a county event? Because, I mean, frankly, when I went to go visit you guys during the Alexander, yeah, I mean, I didn't, you know, always think about the, you know, human services piece or that kind of piece. So are there efforts to bring them into things more so they, they feel more a part of it, so they understand that? Or how do we message that from, like, say, Loretta's level? And, you know, I'm curious, because I do agree, and I mean, I think that there's a role for a lot of different departments as we do this work. But how do we, how do we message that, or how do we make sure that that's understood by everyone?
Did you want to talk about? Okay. Well, one thing is, we do have, in some cases, we have people who are highly involved. They've taken the leadership role, like human services is a good example, public health is another good example, where they lead a certain branch within operations in our Emergency Operations Center. So human services leads our mass care and sheltering, you know? And then public health leads our, our health and medical side. So they've really taken that. They've owned it. They've created their own processes around it. Both of them had a Department Operations Center activated for Alexander Mountain Fire, which means that they had a whole staff at another location activated helping them. And then they had the leads in the Emergency Operations Center. In other ways, though, we don't have that, and we have some gaps in the Emergency Operations Center. So it's, we, we often feel like we have to kind of beg, borrow, and steal from departments. And sometimes they're just like, well, you know, we just really don't have the time right now. Or, you know, with IT, we've gone back and forth about how you got to put in a ticket. And I'm like, for an EOC activation, I'm not putting in a ticket. I want somebody here. So we've been talking about that, just what's the level of service that's needed? And if it's a small, you know, activation where it's just our staff, totally makes sense that we would just put in a ticket or we call somebody. But when it's a Level One activation or Level Two activation where it's the entire room, we just need a higher level of service. So we're just trying to figure out how to, how to marry that up so that the county sees it as a whole-of-county operation instead of just OEM.
And document it. So this, this work that she's doing with Mark Pfaffinger isn't just for IT, it's also for all of support services. So if they need extra vehicles to get things done, if they need a higher level of support from the tech staff-
The fuel.
Fuel, that's another one. I think where we, where we still have gaps is in logistics. Let's say that we need a pickup truck to take something from one place to another place. We start looking for volunteers rather than having agreements in place ahead of time. And so Lori and I have talked about maybe bringing this to department heads in January to talk, similarly to what we're talking about now, and then identify these gaps and expectation that this is not, an emergency does not belong to Lori and her team. An emergency is the county's community emergency, and we all respond. It's why it's in our job description. And it's a, it's a culture piece. The more of these we have, the better we get at it. But then time passes and new people, you know, get in place, and we kind of address the same thing. So we'll talk more about it as a leadership team. I don't think it's reluctance to help. I think it's not understanding what their role could be and what the expectations are ahead of time, so that it's really clear when that bell rings, it's time to go and get into the help mode.
Will, will some of those folks or any, be joining at the, the exercise that we were doing at FEMA, kind of to, to kind of solidify that, I guess, you know, what those roles are and what that looks like?
Yeah. And I think I'll also, I'll touch on that, but also add that within our EOC, you know, we, we call it the core team. And the core team is kind of what Lori was talking about, these people who, they know they have a specific responsibility or a position within the EOC. And those are made up of a lot of other folks from the county who have just kind of expressed an interest in being part of the EOC. And we've done that with part of our kind of like recruitment over the last few years of just saying like, hey, if you guys want to be a part of the EOC, you know, running an incident isn't, you know, for a staff of six, it's, takes the county, you know? And so we've had a number of departments and divisions who have expressed just support of doing that and allowed their, you know, where their, an individual supervisor has said, yeah, I mean, of course, if you're interested in taking that, that responsibility on, it does look like coming to some incidents or some exercises throughout the year. So you'd have to allow your, your staff to maybe come to those, as well as letting them come to activations and being kind of primary at an EOC during activations. And I think the support has been really good, specifically for, for that. And we have a bunch of roles filled by other folks in the county, and those folks will be coming to the exercise that we're doing in Maryland. But I think it even goes, it goes further as well. And that's like when we have like calls to action, I think, because we're just not big enough, or we have other things come up. And I think we did send during Alexander Mountain Fire, I think, Loretta, you sent an email saying, hey, we need some help, you know, can anyone want to say yes? And we did have a number of folks. In fact, someone from the Workforce Development Center actually ran our credentialing and came into the EOC and was a huge part of that success. And so just, again, like making department heads and stuff like that aware that those asks might come up in the future and being able-
And formalizing it.
Yeah, and formalizing it. And then even the use of equipment or facilities, I think is a big one. Obviously, we use the ranch a decent amount. But on Pearl Fire, a big shout-out to Roden Bridge, they, we used the Livermore Shop as the incident command post and the staging area and a number, for a, for a number of things, because they couldn't get one close to the, to the fire. So that obviously saves, you know, us a bunch of money in the end, really, because we don't have to do land use agreements with other folks and pay them to, like, Sylvandale Ranch during Alexander Fire. So- So, yeah, it's just a great partnership, having them say, yeah, of course, I mean, it's there, so let's use it. So just encouraging those things.
I think it's that flexibility. You know, one of the things after credentialing happened at, at the, at the site, at the ranch, there were still credentials that need to be given. And so the clerk's office stepped up and said, well, we've got motor V offices, we'll do it, we'll do it in Fort Collins and Loveland. So we don't always know what to ask for, but the idea that flexibility is key, everyone's part of this, you're going to get asked to do things, to the extent you can, please do them, raise your hand as fast as you can, so that we have more volunteers than what we need. I think that's the culture we're looking for. I'm sorry, I think I interrupted the commissioner.
Commissioner Shadak McNally, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think this is really great to, it seems, your team is always continually innovative and thinking ways of continuous improvement. So what I think about this, when you say you're like these different levels of service, is that also help with, I know it's in everyone's job description, but is also help with documenting, with reimbursement from FEMA and some of those things? If there's a process and it's kind of documented, this is the next step? And because I'm sure if you're spending time and pulling folks, it might not get doc, I don't know, it might, and take extra steps. So I'm just curious about how that also works with kind of the overall, so you don't have to go back and recreate things, it's already created, so it's kind of there in the package to go forward? Is that, am I making sense?
Yeah. So that's one of the reasons why I want to formalize more of this, to where it is great to get volunteers, but then also you have to train them up, you have to get them to kind of understand the emergency operations center environment, they're long hours, it's stressful. And then also, they might not know the paperwork that they need to fill out, so we can get reimbursed for their time. Where if we could have, say, like code development, you know, they've been great where they offer up their staff a lot for volunteers. If we have them volunteer for a specific function, and that's always their function, we train them up on that function, they lead that function, then I think that that's better, because then they already know when they're coming in, we don't have to train them every time. Kind of like damage assessment teams. You know, when I first started here, we didn't have a damage assessment team, now we do. They all know their role, and we don't really have to tell them what to do. All I have to do is activate them. And they, they're able to go forth, they have the right equipment that they need. So I just want to see more of that for like the call center and a few other items that we have, just more of a formal process. And I do understand too that this isn't what these folks normally do. We work in emergencies every day, we're used to it, where this is outside of the norm. So getting those folks too who are comfortable in that environment is important. There's some people who just cannot work in that kind of a stressful environment. So we got to understand that too. But I just don't want it to change constantly, you know? Then it's hard and we got to beg for people. I just want to try to stop doing that as much as I can.
So my other question, you know, this happened at a time where it's a critical, we had to shut down our reservoirs and our open spaces. That was a loss of revenue for them. Also, it took some of their staff to keep the reservoirs closed and to monitor so that, I don't think we've had this level of air support coming and scooping out of the reservoirs. I could be wrong. I, and so I'm curious, couple of questions there. Is there a way to reimburse DNR and stuff for lack of revenue from having shut down? And then also, how, how do you partner with DNR, with some of the Rangers and stuff that had to do, you know, like maybe multiple duties, like keeping the reservoir safe and keeping, like the patrol boats had to make sure someone else wasn't out there, but also, you know, the deputies are maybe helping cover the sheriff, you know, duties or, you know, the roads. It just seems like a lot of duties shift and flex. And I'm also wondering about, you know, just planning ahead in case, you know, we do have to shut down again our open spaces and that they run on a very tight budget as well. And I'm just curious about some of those things.
So lost revenue is not really covered under any FEMA programs or state programs. So that would be a county decision to offset with your guys' reserves towards that effort. So that's kind of above my pay grade, but it wouldn't be part of, we track that loss and we're able to get recouped for it. I don't know of a FEMA program that allows for that. As for the Rangers, I do know that the sheriff's office deputizes them for a certain amount of time during emergencies and disasters to do that role. So I have been talking to Lorenza too, I was going to bring it up at the end, about our disaster policy. And so people, when they are working the disaster, they do get paid for those extra hours, which was an incentive that the board, when I first came in in 2014, I'm sorry, we did speak about that, because you lose a lot of people, they burn out, especially after the flood. We saw a lot of burnout from people who just worked and worked and worked, and there was really no benefit to them for that. So I think that that's something that is in policy now, which I think helps quite a bit.
Thank you.
No worries. All right, well, I'm going to have Cole talk about, we had two call center activations. The Alexander Mountain Fire was one of them. That's the first time we've trained on the call center quite a bit for both reunification, damage assessments, and otherwise. But this is the first time where we got to really activate it. The room was full and the call centers were working. Lauren, who couldn't be here today, she's on vacation, she's really probably like the head of this call center operation. She's helped create all the processes. She's worked with Lisa Puckett with IT quite a bit to make sure that we have it where the different phones will ring at different times. So Cole can talk about these two different events that we've had here.
Okay. So yeah, the call center is something that we've known we've needed for a while. Of course, we have a joint information center, but that's a little different of a function. That's just people calling in with questions and kind of being given, you know, resources if they need them. But there's sometimes specific needs that'll come up during an incident that might be more of an intensive workload for, that like the JIC can't take on. So we've always known we've needed it. It's been something that we've been working on because of, again, like what Lori mentioned, we know that there's potential chance of mass casualty events, where we might need to kind of facilitate reunification and calls this way. We get a lot of calls for people wanting to talk through damage assessment. And then there's other just things that come up, like credentialing was another thing for folks that we didn't realize initially when we were planning for a call center that maybe that would be the purpose it's used for. But we have a lot of people calling in that need, that have questions for that, and the JIC can kind of easily send them to us. So we've been doing a lot of work with, obviously Zoom kind of coming on, or as we've kind of moved towards Zoom, being able to, to take that technology and make sure it works for us. And it's been a great tool, and I think obviously part of the success that we have now with our call center is because of IT and being able to utilize this. So there's a, a bunch of training we do for this. There's also a lot of partners we utilize. So I think one of the things we mentioned, obviously using county personnel, being able to help is another, this is another role that those folks can fill, because we don't just have people who can staff a call center out of nowhere. So we need to use our county folks who are already trained, especially in that Zoom system, that's a very good resource to pull from. We had Loveland Fire, who was an absolute game changer for staffing this as well. And then we also utilized our voluntary organizations active in disaster for staffing this as well. And so those, all those partners came on to kind of say, yes, they would do it. For Cameron Peak, oh, not for Cameron Peak, for Alexander Mountain Fire, we had them in there kind of working through, again, the damage assessment side of things, as well as the credentialing and just answering questions, making sure you point people in the right direction, or comforting them when we don't have an answer, and getting back to them with answers when we can. This has been, this was a great opportunity, I think, to take everything that we're exercising and conceptualizing as we develop the call center with Zoom, to now put it into practice and then see what, how we can, we can make it better. And we've identified a number of things, you know, with the call center of how we might be able to improve upon it in the future for additional, you know, computers or monitors or technology or personnel or training. There's a number of things. So this is just going to get better. We also, I think, you know, saw that with the CSU incident. CSU called us and said, hey, we don't have this capability. It's been something on our mind that we just haven't done. And they do have a lot. So we were able to say, yeah, I mean, we have, we have the ability to have you guys over. And so we went in and activated our, our call center, and they just brought the staff. And with Zoom, we're able to kind of very quickly change the messaging to make it seem as if it is a, you know, a CSU call center. And nobody, the public didn't know the difference. You know, just they're calling one number, being able to put that out from their PIOs and parents or whoever's calling are able to kind of get the questions answered that they needed. So this is again, kind of part of a like regional EOC concept that we keep talking about, is being able to make sure that our, our facility and our capabilities are available to our partners. And I know that helped alleviate a lot of stress on the CSU side while they're responding to multiple incidents on their campus and being able to kind of, while they're still working through some gaps on their side and improving their own capabilities, they're able to lean in us and just say, hey, you know, we're all part of the, kind of the county emergency management team, so let's, let's use our stuff. So they did, and they came in and it was, it was great. So we're going to keep doing that. And again, encourage like our partners to kind of be a part of these trainings that we do, because it's not just a Laramie County function. I think we can, we've learned that we can also utilize this tool for deployment, whether it's to support CSU or Fort Collins or Loveland or any of our partners who may need it at the time, to be able to come in and utilize that. And Zoom is a, is a great tool for that. And so I think us just being able to keep working with IT to make sure that's easier. This was something we're trained on, like using the call center, when it was great for the CSU event, because we could come in the day before and take care of it, because it's not our incident. Whereas in Alexander Mountain Fire, this is just another example of how important having IT in our building is at the time, is because we were, you know, so bogged down with our other roles, you know, that we're doing. So when it came time to activate our call center, it was great to be able to call IT and say, or have that person that was there at our EOC and say, hey, I know we've been trained on this, but we are absolutely, you know, slammed right now. Can you guys facilitate the activation of this? And then being able to come in and just be there and help stand that up, helped get that, get that going quicker, which helped us to be able to deliver that function, or that to our, you know, the public as fast as possible, which was, which was great. And we want to see that in the future too.
So one of the lessons that we had from the Cameron Peak Fire was when we had, we had about 500 structures that were damaged or destroyed in Cameron Peak, we had to Google and try to find the contacts for every one of those people. So that takes an enormous amount of time to do. So what we did with the call center this time is, people were able to call the call center, give their contact information and their address for us, so that then when we did have the damages, we had a whole list of contacts, which saved a lot of time. So that's definitely something we're going to think about in the future too, you know, provide people an area, if you live in this area, please, you know, call our call center and give us your contact information, because, you know, it's not something that's in a public database somewhere. So we have to actually just kind of try to find it in public records. So that was a very huge thing for us. Any questions about call center stuff? This was obviously new, but it was exciting to be able to do it, and now we have some lessons learned from it.
I have a question. On that third bullet point, need for dedicated personnel for call center operations, how do you envision that happening since a call center, as I understand that a call center operation is not, not activated all the time?
Yeah, so I probably used the wrong language there. We want people who are trained in call center operations that can come in whenever we do a call center. So like I mentioned, code compliance, you know, they've been very willing to have their staff trained up on the call center. That way, they do code compliance every day, but when we're activated and we activate the call center, they would already know how to use a Zoom system, they could come in and do it. So yeah, I'm not asking for like, hey, I need six more bodies just to sit around and do nothing until we.
I did mention with that, that EOC core team, that there's a bunch of roles that we ask people to fill. So that could absolutely be a role, like an EOC call center manager could be a role that someone might say, yeah, I mean, I'm willing to do that, and then help us with filling that, that seat during a disaster, so it doesn't have to be one of us that is doing multiple things. That person could just come in and, and know what to do and how to do it, and exercise with us throughout the year and stuff like that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
What I envision around that is, we would have a pool of staff who had volunteered to be trained to be in a call center. Not all of them will be called for every event, but they would be trained to understand what their role is, that you get a script, that you understand what you're gathering, what, what the job isn't. I think there's a lot of fear around what happens when I get there and what will be expected of me and will I be prepared? So I think that's the next step, is now that we've got this call center concept up and going, we need to have a group of staff who are, are trained and ready to go.
Yeah, and the call center is a very stressful place to be too, because you're working with the public who may or may not have had either damages, or they're trying to find a loved one in a reunification. So we do need certain types of people too who can handle that stress. But also, we need to know too how to best support them as they're working in the call center, giving them breaks regularly and making sure that their mental health is good. So that's something that we learned too with this, is you can't just keep them in there for 12 hours and no breaks. It's, it's one of those jobs where high stress, working with the public, so we need to make sure that we're, we're working on that behavioral health component too.
And presumably, the call center would operate alongside of the joint information center, or does that depend on the level of the incident, or how does that work?
The joint information center will almost always be activated before we do a call center, but we have the call tree set up to where when you call it, it'll say, if you call the call center, it'll say, if you want the joint information center for basic information, press one, and it goes to the joint information center. And same thing for joint information center. If you need information about damage assessments, press one, and it will send them to the call center. So we're, ours is targeted, where the joint information center is more broad, any information you might need, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, so the last two things are, we had two hurricane deployments. Both Camille and myself went to two different hurricanes, Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton. And so what I wanted to mostly tell you guys about these deployments is the value that it brings to Laramie County. A lot of times, you know, I think that people are like, why would you send people all the way across the world when we don't have hurricanes here? There are huge lessons that we learn when we're out there. One, we can help another jurisdiction, and then hopefully, you know, if we ever need help, people come to help us. But also, we can take a lot of lessons back. And so we did learn some stuff on both these deployments. Camille's going to talk about Helene a little bit, and then I'm going to talk about Hurricane Milton as well. So Camille, go ahead.
That's a picture of Lauren dropping me off at the airport. She said it looked like she was sending her kid to college or something. Yeah, so I had the wonderful opportunity to be able to deploy. It was my first deployment. I went with the Eastern Incident Management Team. I had applied for the team about a week before I got deployed, so it was a very quick turnaround. And within that deployment, I went as their logistics section chief. I was a trainee, meaning I don't have my task book completely filled out, so I am technically not qualified yet, but you go on these deployments to be with other personnel who can sign these off. This was an all hazards type event and a type three type event. I had such a wonderful experience, and I just want to again thank our team here that you guys provide opportunities for us to go out. There were lots of lessons learned, and I think one of them is truly how, how integral a policy group is and what it looks like when that policy group maybe is not on the same page as your EOC staff. And how, to public information, to daily operations of the EOC, what that looks like when those two groups are not as cohesive as we have here. It made me very excited to be able to return home and work here. But within that, for example, just situations where things had been communicated in confidence to policy group members, and then before the PIO had an opportunity to create and craft a message that was representative of the realities of what was happening, have members say stuff on their personal platforms and the confusion that resulted in accessing information, the confusion with the public on, well, what's the reality, what is the truth here? I was running seven points, seven point of distribution sites where we were dropping off tarps, waters, MREs, and five of those were also concurrent shelters. And that was a heavy logistical load. So this was a very logistics-heavy deployment. I was very busy, and it was super fun, but some of the policies and functions that we have very well trained up here just was not the culture there. So trying to communicate these, what I thought being very privileged, this is my first emergency management job with Lori, that this was, this is just the way you do it, coming into a different culture and being told, well, this isn't how we do it, and me having it explained, that's fine, but if you don't do this, then you might not be eligible for reimbursement and what that might mean for your community and your long-term recovery. The commissioners were very, very, they cared about their people, which also meant that they wanted things done immediately. And the process wasn't always followed, which could result in a harder recovery process for their community. On the flip side of that, I also learned what it's like to, like, be picked up from one city and have to embed in a completely different one, and start being able to manage anyone, that we don't have this camaraderie relationship, like all of these exercises that we do. I don't have this trust that I've built with you from being here and a steadfast face with you for two years. How do I build that on a flip side and make sure that we can build a working relationship, where you trust that I've come here with the best intentions for your community, and you allow me to do the work that I need to do, so we can get everyone, this whole community approach? And I think the key thing, I know we've talked a little bit here about making sure that we have this Larimer County whole department approach, and that was very obvious to me where I had gone, that some of that culture isn't there, and how much we have that culture. I, in Alexander, Matt Kendall and I had made lots of ground operation plans for fleet, just being able to call up a department head and have this expectation of, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours, how can you help me? And that wasn't always available to me in Florida. That was mind-boggling to me. I was very like, oh, okay, sure, I'll figure it out, like, I'll drive the box truck, I guess, I can do that. And so I think, I just want to reiterate, while we have brought up a lot on how we want to formalize these processes and these relationships building, Larimer County is very strong in these. And everyone has said that to me. Everyone has said, Larimer County is so different, you want to experience. And I kind of thought it was, I don't know, hyperbole, and then you go somewhere else, and you're like, oh, I will be staying here for a long, long time. So, and I just took a lot, I almost filled up my whole taskbook, so I will be shortly a qualified type three logs section chief, so I'm very excited about that, too.
I will say, Camille is already a qualified logistics section chief. Camille just doesn't think she's qualified. She went originally as a trainee, thinking that there was going to be a logistics chief that she would be working under, and then they said, nope, you're logs chief. And I think the reason that they told her that is because we've had activations here in Larimer County. They know that, you know, Camille's done the job. So I think that that was, while I know that you wanted to work kind of under a logistics chief, I think there's lessons, too, in just being able to go and do the job and figure it out as you go, you know?
Yeah, I talked to the state, and I was like, sick, yeah, here's my information, make my flight. So who am I working with? And they're like, working with. And I was like, you know, the logs chief, who am I going? And they're like, it's you, baby. Get over there. I was like, oh, sick. Lori, do you think I can do this in my hotel room?
I said, absolutely, you can do this, you'll own it. And you did own it, so that was good. So I went two weeks later to Hurricane Milton. I also went to Florida under the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, which is governor-to-governor mutual aid. So one governor asks all the other governors if they have people. Florida tends to use Colorado teams, we've gone to Florida quite a bit, so they trust our teams to do the job. I was actually sent different, Camille was sent with an incident management team, so each of them had a specific position they were working when they went. I was sent with a bunch of emergency managers to fill any role that was needed. So we didn't have a specific position that we were going for. We were just sent to see what's going to be the need, and we would just fill in whatever that need is. So kind of my impressions here was, one thing was that, when I first got there, I was really impressed with how much the state of Florida supported local counties. I mean, all the logistics came from the state, all the resource ordering went up to the state. So at first, I was like, oh, this is working out pretty well. The downside of that, though, is that when the state wanted to just shut stuff down, maybe the county, community's not ready for that yet, but it wasn't a choice. It was just, now we're shutting down the pod centers, you know, points of distribution, or we're shutting down the comfort centers, and then the locals had to try to figure it out. So that's why I think it's really important for us to always have disasters local and do as much as we can local, because then when, if somebody pulls out, we have our process here, we're good to go. So I've always believed that. When I went to Florida, I was kind of like, well, this isn't too bad. But then when they started pulling out of stuff, and the counties were like, wait a second, we still have needs here, that showed me why it's important to really have that local capacity. Dashboards I mentioned, I sent our team almost every day a new dashboard. I was in a very large emergency operations center. There were over 100 people in that emergency operations center. It's much like ours, a little bit bigger, though. They had a whole GIS team, they had a whole IT team in different rooms that were just supporting whoever needed it. And so they had a dashboard for really anything you could ever imagine. This was a self-reporting, oh, sorry, I don't have the right thing up. Why isn't that up? This is a self-reporting dashboard, which I really loved. It's where people could just call in and say, hey, there's a tree across the road, or hey, there's debris in my property. If we had another 2013 flood, I think that this would be highly valuable to have, to just start figuring out where do we need to provide that level of assistance? So dashboards, I loved them. So we are going to be getting those here in Larimer County. The lack of continuity in positions, one thing that I noticed is, you know, they had me working in the planning section. They had probably 10 people in the planning section, and so I was there to learn somebody's position, and then let them take a day off, work that position while I was training for the next position. So I just kind of went around the table and started getting people time off. But the way that they had it structured is each person had a single role. Like, my job is to do the situation report, and the person next to them, is their job is to do the plan, and the next person was their job is to do the maps, the next person did the presentations. So, but nobody else knew what they did, and so you couldn't just mix and match or have somebody do both jobs at the same time. So we do have a little bit better continuity here, but again, the leads, I think, like I already mentioned, there can be burnout there if we don't have enough people that can take those positions. Camille already mentioned kind of the strategy versus tactics versus policy direction. In the EOC I was in, there were three commissioners, and individually, they would call the EOC, and they would say, I want a comfort station set up at this location tomorrow. And so everybody would have to scramble and set up that comfort station there the next day, and then they'd say, okay, now I want to overhear. So it was constantly a logistics lift of these comfort stations and points of distribution moving. And it wasn't up to the board, it was up to each individual commissioner what they wanted for their constituents. So what it caused, what I saw, was that it made it so, remember how I talked about consequence management? We're always trying to look two to three days forward. And the reason we do that is we want to prioritize, what are the biggest needs? How do we fill those needs? Well, if we had a hurricane here, which we're not going to, but if we had a hurricane here, we would want to look strategically at the county and find out where's the best places to put pods and comfort sites, keep them in a location so that people know where to go, they're not constantly moving around, and the public information officer has to try to figure out the information. So they weren't able to do that in this county, they were constantly just in reaction mode. And so that was kind of something that I really think that we have as a strength here, is that we're very forward-leaning, and we're also very strategic in our actions to try to help the broad community instead of this pocket here or that pocket here, you know? So that was kind of the big thing for me that I had. Other lessons learned, tools and tricks to improve processes. So they use ReadyOp at the county that I was in, we use ReadyOp, but they use it in a number of ways that I've never seen it used before. So I'm going to work with the owner of the ReadyOp software to bring forward some of that stuff. He should be able to bring us some of the forms they use. This reporting tool was all built in ReadyOp as their damage assessment self-reporting. They also had a QR code on all the desks, and this is something I think it would help you guys, as well as other agency partners. There's a QR code, and if you scan the QR code, it gives you all the links to anything you might need for that incident. So their latest situation report, the latest maps, you know, the latest plan. So any of that information that would just be good to click and have it at your fingertips. So that is something that's probably pretty easy for us to do, we just need to take the time to build that out. So that's kind of process improvements that we're going to do. I already mentioned, we can up our game with dashboards and visual displays to really give people that one-stop-shop for information. And I mentioned that disasters are now a GIS game, like GIS is everything in our world now. So having that support with that new position is going to be huge. And then that whole of Larimer approach, again, is necessary just to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing for the community as a whole. So kind of finally, the big strengths and the thank you that we have, and I think Camille, you know, voiced this as well, is you guys know your role as a policy group, you work as a board, right? And so whenever we have one of you sign a document, the three of you get together, and then we ratify it, right? So we have all these processes that I think work really well. I think I can give you guys more briefings or situation reports, which I've talked to our staff about, and maybe even adding a liaison officer. I've been thinking about Shane, a liaison officer in the EOC who can make sure that our legislators are all informed about what's going on, and all of our electeds are informed. But then just making sure I tighten that up a little bit. But you guys, you know, you know your role, you also provide the autonomy and the authority that we need. I hear from emergency managers all the time that they don't have the authority to do the job that they need to do. And so by you guys giving us that autonomy to do the job and the authority to do the job, it just makes everything so much smoother and better. So I did want to thank you guys very much for that, the way that we have it here in Larimer, and then that collaborative culture that we have in the team environment, it's really good. So, and then the disaster policy I already mentioned, we have a number of different things within that disaster policy, but one of the things in there is that disaster worker pay provision that allows for people to get paid, if they're exempt employees, they can get paid for the hours that they work that are extra overtime. So that was it. Any questions you guys have for us?
Thank you, Lori. Colleagues, questions, comments? I defer, but I do have a question, but I can wait. Commissioner, yeah?
I have some other questions I can ask them offline, but I'm curious. Cole, can you just give us kind of a 10-second update of a window or the what we think we're, if we're going to be going to the East Coast, too, since we had to cancel our exercise or our trip?
Yeah, so yeah, we are going. It's the last week of April. I cannot, off the top of my head, remember those, or if you have them on the, Ricardo might be able to pull up the dates officially. But yeah, the last week of April, there, it's again, going to be the same kind of crew, Larimer County, Fort Collins, Loveland especially, and then other partners, including Estes and private sector, other private sector and nonprofits coming. We are working a little bit for changing up the scenario a little bit, because it was pretty similar to what we saw to Alexander. But there's a lot that I think will be really cool with going, because we had a similar incident. So we'll be able to kind of look back on how we did, and then also improve upon that in the face of additional complexities that we'll come up with the exercise. So it's also a good opportunity to bring people who weren't as involved to be also kind of trained up a little bit, and learning a little bit more about everyone's different roles and responsibilities. So yeah, but that's the last week of, the last week of April, 28 through the 1st, I think, coming back on the 2nd. So yeah, that week. And yeah, you should see some more messaging coming out soon. I know FEMA was pretty busy with the hurricanes, so their staff that were helping us with the exercises had to kind of put it on hold for a bit, but we're kind of, I just got an email today, so they're kind of back on it. So you should hear some more soon, but yeah.
Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, actually, I think we have it on our calendars already, so.
I just hadn't looked that far ahead, I was just hoping to look at which month, thank you.
So one of the things that I, you know, had a conversation with, like a short conversation with Lorraine about was, so thank you for saying that we're good at following directions and staying in our lane. And I think that, you know, sometimes that the issue comes with is that, you know, the residents know to come to us, and there is a desire to be helpful to the residents, right? And so, so it comes from a good place that people want to, but I think you've trained us well in that we're not trying to jump the gun. And so, you know, what I talked to Lorraine was about was, you know, having some, you know, beyond the, like, we declare the emergency, we have to sign things, we have to, you know, make some of those policies, you know, what things could we do that would be in the scope of being helpful? Our residents see us participating, so they know we're part of that group, but not, you know, overstepping our welcome. And so I think that that would be an interesting place to sort of define what that looks like, right? So I think I had texted you one point, for example, during Alexander, and said, gosh, could I go over to the Red Cross, you know, shelter and just visit with folks and see what's going on? Would that be intrusive? Would that be, you know, because, you know, I guess there's just, there's a point at which you want your residents to see that you are helping with this situation.
Right.
Or when they ask you, you have something to say. You don't want to give them bad information, but you don't want to be like, I don't know. Look at the, you know, go to the JSC kind of thing, right? And so I think that that would be interesting to sort of look in the role, at the role in that way of, like, so one person's not, you know, also getting maybe all the, like, information, right? We're all knowledgeable about the situation, we all have that same knowledge base, we've all participated in the same way, kind of thing. So I guess, you know, that, that's the role we find ourselves in as electeds, is not, you know, we don't want to interfere, we know you guys are doing your job, we know that the job should be done by professionals, and, you know, what does our role look like in that space? And so I guess, you know, we can all kind of think about, you know, what that might look like, so we can still feel like we're, I mean, it's not just feeling like we're doing something, it really is sort of demonstrating to the community that we're involved in this situation, right? And so I think that that, you know, I think we can think on that, but that's just something that I've sort of pondered as we dealt with Alexander Fire, which was like, how do we, how are we active and not in the way?
Well, I think that there's two things right away that we can do. You know, a few days into Alexander Mountain Fire, Ricardo and the Public Information Officer Group put together a fact sheet of, here's all the different ways in which you can give information, and we gave that out to you guys, which I think helped quite a bit, because then our phone calls went down. But the other thing is, you know, when I was in Florida, they did have a designated liaison in the Emergency Operations Center, who his whole job was to make sure the electeds were informed about what was going on, passing along information from the electeds, and then also the legislators, or when the Florida Division of Emergency Management Director came, you know, he made sure that he managed that whole thing. So I haven't talked to Lorraine about any of this, but I've been thinking about that, too, like, having that role to where I'm not pulled away from the EOC manager job to do that, which right now, I'm kind of trying to do that, but I'm failing miserably, because we get really busy. So I know that you guys have a need to have information and know information. I also know that you guys get the calls from the public. So I get that it's a need, and in no way are we saying, hey, stay out of it, and we'll let you know when there's something you need to do. We don't, in no way want that either. So I think that finding that happy place to where we can make sure you guys have what you need to talk to the public, and also you guys can get involved in positive ways. What we were talking about really is just that authority to do our job without somebody coming in and changing everything and saying, no, scrap that, I want you to do this thing over here. That happened quite a bit there, and that was just, that was horrible. So, but I do think the public information officers, they have a role right away in providing like that fact sheet of, here's where the shelters are, here's where this is, so you can give that information out, knowing what the JIC phone number is, so you can give that information out, too. And then maybe having that liaison officer role, I think would really help.
Just to build on that, because we're right around 3:30 or so. Yeah, I just want to reinforce what the commissioners have said, that it would be helpful to know how could, we can be helpful and not get in the way. I was always reluctant to, you know, contact the sheriff or you, or call, say, can I go up to the incident command center? Because I didn't want to get in the way. So I think that would be very helpful to clarify, what are some constructive ways we can help? And when you described the situation in Florida, if I heard correctly, you had said something about a commissioner, I assume a county commissioner, coming into the EOC and saying, no, I need you over, you need to be over here.
Right.
And the question that arose in my mind is, how does that commissioner know that? Is that commissioner out in the floodwaters? Or are people calling and saying, we need help over here? And wouldn't that interfere with your overall strategy? Could you just comment on that kind of quickly?
Oh, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, one thing that we deal with all the time in emergency management, emergency services, is you get people calling saying, I have a great need. If I only know about the people calling with needs, I'm missing entire communities that aren't calling us that have probably the bigger need, right? So we need to look strategically at the whole picture and try to figure out how we can solve multiple problems altogether. And yes, that's what was happening, was the commissioners were directing the Emergency Operations Center to do tactics, and I think this is another benefit of Larimer County, you all three have districts, but you're elected by the whole, and I think that's good. Where in Florida, they're elected by their district, and so they wanted to help their district. And so that was what their focus was, completely not about the whole of the community. So I think that's where some of that was caused. But I also think it was just, I think there needs to be some education there about strategy versus tactics, you know? You guys are much more at that policy and strategic level, leave the tactics to the operators and the field personnel to figure out how to make it happen. But because they were constantly talking to them every day and directing what the EOC should be doing, I mean, consider if you guys did that here, and you said, no, move the firefighters over to this area, because it's heavier hit, think about the dangers that that could cause if we had that level of a policy direction. So I think we're talking two different things here. One is kind of that, knowing the role of the policymaker is a huge role, and we need you guys to be available for that role, and we need our operators to be able to do what they're doing. But then also, you guys need to be able to have information to help the community to also get involved in some of the events, news conferences, whatever that is. So I think that we have the ability to improve our processes in a way to where you guys get what you guys need, and we're able to manage in the EOC without, you know, stressing me out.
Well, I was just going to say, I think that liaison person that Lori's talking about will also be a super help for this, because it's going to make sure you guys know even more, like, what's going on. So as you guys get calls from the public, you'll be able to say, oh, yeah, I mean, they are, or we are considering this, or we're doing this thing, and you'll have those facts right there, or have a person that can answer that. Or as you're getting concerns or things from the, which I think you guys have done, and done a good Or um as you're getting concerns or things from the, the, which I think you guys have done and and done a good job of, but eh you might get concerns from the community and then be able to send that back to us and say, hey, I'm not seeing this on the stuff you guys are working on or doing. Are you considering this? And then we can, you know, either say, yeah, we are, or um do it.
And who the, who the right person is to have that conversation? Is it you? Is it the liaison? Because we certainly don't want to stress out our O E M director or anything like that. But I I, I, I think it would be helpful to know where there are some gaps in personnel and and like what Commissioner was saying about uh, you know, visiting the, the Red Cross station. Are, are there some, you know, could we be helpful there, loading boxes or doing something?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do, that's why, I mean, I haven't talked to Shane or anybody about this, but that's why I was thinking about Shane, because it's not just the commissioners. It's all the legislators, right? All of the electeds that we're working with on an incident all need information, right? So we want to make sure we're giving you guys that information. And also, this only happens, I, I shouldn't say this because I said this right before uh COVID, and then we ended up being activated for eight months. But usually, it's like once or twice a year that we would have this level of an activation to where we're super busy and we need somebody to be a liaison. Every other time, really, it is something I can handle or Cole can handle because they're smaller events. So um it's just something that we're thinking about, and I need to obviously talk to Lorinda more about.
Uh well, I, thank you. I think uh we've had a good con, good conversation, lessons learned. Uh I, one thing about Shane perhaps being asked to serve in this role, he's pretty maxed out as it is. So I'm sure that's a good conversation to have with Lorinda to determine the feasibility of that. But I think the concept is a really good one. Um Ricardo, you want to say anything real quick? But eh like in one minute or thirty seconds?
Um yeah, I know if we're at, at a time. Uh I think I'll just touch on the kind of the, the public information coordination. So out of the E O C, I fill the, the public information officer role. Uh and our role is really to support the public information efforts that are going on. So most of the time, it's the sheriff's office that's the lead public information officer. And then in this fire, um like in Cameron Peak, it was the U S Forest Service and then with the incident management team. So there was a lot of coordination, a lot of communication throughout the fire. I think we stood up the um incident website within that first day pretty quickly for people to start receiving updates um in coordination with the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office stood up the Joint Information Center within hours of the fire, which was awesome because then it relieved all the public calls that people were interested and wanted questions and answers to. Um so that, yeah, the, the, there's a lot of coordination. We also stood up a um public information officer kind of group, networking group within the last year and a half. Um so we meet every two months, and this is a group of around fifty public information officers within Larimer that are public safety, health, um hospitals. Um and we, we try to network and meet each other and have that coordination and communication within um kind of when an incident happens. So uh we saw that really be a benefit in this fire because we were instantly um texting each other, kind of communicating really quickly. Uh so it was a huge benefit. But yeah, a lot of coordination, um along with other areas.
Thank you, Ricardo. I believe uh it's three thirty-eight P M, so we are adjourned. Thank you all for your work.